All right. Thank you all for being here this evening. Today is Monday, November 20th, 2023. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we are going to go ahead and we are calling the meeting to order. Roll call, Councilmember Maldonado.
Here.
Councilmember Bucelado is ill. Councilmember Neal is running.
I'm here.
Oh, my goodness. Councilmember Bucelado.
She's on Zoom.
She's on Zoom.
I'm here.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal will be joining us. Councilmember Cortez is not joining us this evening. Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mendoza.
Here.
And Mayor Walter here. At this time, we are going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. My apologies. I did take that out of order. My apologies. Once in a great while that happens. To move into Call to the Public, and Call to the Public is for public comment on issues within the jurisdictional within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be placed on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I do have two speakers at this time and one hand raised on the phone. Ms. Shelley Armour.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Shelley Armour. I am a resident on North Dakota Avenue in Florence Gardens, and I'm here once again to talk about golf carts. So historically, when Florence Gardens decided to turn over the streets in their private park to the town of Florence, there was apparently an agreement with the town regarding golf cart use on the now-public streets within the private park. This agreement remained in place for years until recently, when a decision was made to now enforce the laws. We're now being told the town is choosing to enforce certain requirements regarding the operation of golf carts within the boundaries of Florence Gardens that were not previously enforced. According to the special meeting agenda from the town council meeting dated July 1, 2019, Florence Garden is designated as one of three islands lacking interconnectivity with the wider community of Florence. Each of these three islands have varying levels of pedestrian and other mobility internal to their development areas. Florence Gardens, which dates back to the 1960s, does not have bike lanes or sidewalks. What it does have is a combination of dirt shoulders, 32-foot-wide pavement sections, and a maximum speed of 25 miles per hour. As there are no businesses within the boundaries of the park, other than a couple of hair salons and a realty company, which are just inside the entrance to the park, there are limited motor vehicle trips within the park and nothing to attract outside traffic, which makes mobility relatively safe and efficient. Also, with only one point of entry and exit from the park onto State Route 79, carts are legally prevented from leaving the confines of the park. Members of the Golf Cart Committee, which I represent here, have done research and have found numerous examples of variances and exceptions on public roadways, which we would be more than happy to furnish upon request. At the last town council meeting, I heard reference to the fact that meeting the needs of the elderly, veterans, and I would add the disabled is a priority for the town of Florence. The financial burden of now having to license, register, and bring a golf cart, which for years has been perfectly adequate for use within the confines of the park up to code, or even having to purchase a newer cart that meets the requirements now being enforced, is in no way meeting the needs of the elderly, veterans, and disabled in your community. I have petitions here with over 350 signatures signed by the residents of the five parks seeking remedy from you, the town council, regarding the situation. As you can clearly see, there are many people affected by this who feel something must be done. So in closing, we are asking two things. First, extend the date that enforcement will begin beyond January 1st, 2024, to allow residents arriving after the 1st of the year a fair chance to comply with the regulations. Second, we are asking you to work with us to pass an ordinance allowing the carts within the boundaries of Florence Gardens to be exempt from the requirements of license and registration. This would be a benefit to all five parks as the residents utilize the public streets within the confines of Florence Gardens. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glenn Bills?
I'd yield my time back. I'd just regurgitate the same thing that Shelley gave you. I think we're all here in support of what she said and the card owners of Florence Gardens and the five parks around it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And can we please unmute Ms. Sheri Bedford?
Because I wanted to ask about several things here in Florence. Number one, are we gonna get another dispensary here? We already have three. I want to know if we're gonna get another one. Number two, I see a lot of people that come in with the horses, and they go through the Irish pub. They cannot put their horses out there. Can't we put in pitch poles for them? Also, with our kids, number three, we have nothing for the kids to do here in Florence. I was hoping that we would be able to put a skate park, skateboard park for the kids, some other similarities that Florence Anthem has, such as a wall for the kids to climb on. Some things that they can do, because kids become mischievous when they don't have anything to do. So with that, I am done, and I'll be at the next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Bedford. And then just to give direction, Chief Walls, will you please reach out to, and I will provide this to you, Ms. Shelley Armour, since she's on their golf cart committee, and then I'll give you direction to work with them? Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak that is in attendance, either in person or online? All right, I'll close the first Call to the Public, but we will have a second Call to the Public. Thank you. Item 6A, we do have a proclamation declaring November 25th, 2023, a Small Business Saturday, and we urge all residents to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Mr. Roger Beatty is with us this evening. Mr. Roger Beatty and council, can we please meet down in front of the... Yes, can you?
Will all small business owners in the town of Florence please join mayor and council?
Thank you. So we have the Loft represented on my right, and the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. Thank you both for being here this evening. Small Business Saturday, November 25th, 2023, whereas the government of Florence, Arizona, celebrate and support our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 32 and a half million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 62% of new jobs created since 1995. And small businesses employ 46.8% of employees in the private sector of the United States. Whereas 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small business in their community on Small Business Saturday, 70% of the day makes them want to encourage others to shop small. Independently owned retailers, and 66% report that that day makes them want to shop small all year long. Whereas 58% of shoppers reported that they shopped online with small businesses, and 54% reported that they dined or ordered takeout from a small restaurant, bar, café on Small Business Saturday in 2021. And whereas Florence, Arizona supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the county, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Mayor Walter, do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2023, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. In witness thereof, I hereby set my hand and affix the official seal of the town of Florence this day, the 20th of November, 2023. And I'd like to present this to Mr. Les Kerr with the Loft. Delicious ice cream, amazing meals. Would you like to say a few words?
I just thank the town council and the citizens of Florence for supporting all small businesses that are in town, whether it's Anthem, whether it's Old Town, whether it's on 79. But keep shopping here, and you know, we'd love your money. Thank you.
Very well said. To see everybody out and about shopping the Saturday after Thanksgiving and more, because there's lots of great stores that have been coming into our town, and lots to support. And Ms. Garcia, presentation of the 2024 elections process.
So I, this is my favorite time of year. Everyone knows, election season. So we're here today to announce that our election candidate packets are available and that they can be given out starting tomorrow. There you go. And so, can we move this? It didn't. And so, our primary election will be held on August 6th. Our general election will be held on November 5th. Those not being elected in the primary election will move on to a runoff election in November. I'm pushing the button, guys. Do you want me to use the clicker? And so, what does it take to be a qualified candidate? You must be 18 years of age, you must reside in the town limits for one year, and you must be a qualified elector at the time of filing. What are the benefits for being on council? Well, you get to be the voice of Florence, and you need to get to make a difference in the policy decisions that are set for Florence. The mayor does receive $950 in compensation per month, and the council does receive $650 per month in compensation. We also do lots of trainings with local government, your League of Arizona Cities and Towns, and regional and state trainings as they come available. And of course, you get free membership in our Town of Florence gym that is now 24/7 access. I went too far. I was happy with the clicker. Won't work for you either. And so, whose seats are up? We have one seat for the mayor. Mayor Tara Walters is up, and we have three council seats. And those with terms expiring are Councilmember Kristen Larson, Councilmember Johnny Mendoza, and Councilmember Arthur Snake Neal. So how do you run for office? You come by and you pick up a packet with the clerk's office. We're gonna start our packet distribution, as I said, tomorrow. We'll also start a social media campaign, as well as we'll place advertisements in the local newspapers. People can get those signatures, and they need 99 signatures to be able to make it on the ballot. But the clerk's office is not allowed to accept more than 197 signatures, and they basically have until March 9th. The filing period to turn in packets is March 9th through April 8th. And so in order to do that, you fill out a nomination petition, you get your nomination signatures, you also have to do a financial disclosure statement. And if someone's going to receive or spend more than $500 in any combination, then they'll be filing a candidate statement of organization and having a committee. And remember, that's $250 to expend, comes in, $250 to expense. It's an automatic campaign. So we will begin doing candidate training on December 12th. We invite anyone who's interested in coming. We'll be going over the packets in detail. You don't have to wait till December 12th to be able to pick up your packets. Like I said, we will give you in-person instructions as early as tomorrow, and anytime you come in between now and March 8th or April 8th, because you can still pick them up in the window of bringing in those packets. You'll learn about the election process, we'll review the materials. And everyone needs to know, the clerk's office, we do not give any legal advice. That our town attorney works for the town council, and they cannot give, he cannot give any candidate legal advice. So if anyone's seeking legal advice, they'll need to see a private person and have that legal advice issued to them independently. So signature collections this year, like last year, we're getting together our e-qualified signatures. That means you can go on to the Secretary of State's office, develop signature petitions if you so choose, and place an advertisement out on your various social media accounts to obtain signatures in an electronic format. Citizens have to choose to also participate. That means they have to fill out data in order to know that they are a valid signature, and that's all processed through the Secretary of State's office. So those signatures need to be sent into the clerk's office electronically at the same day that the person schedules an appointment to come in and bring in their packets. It is a really fun way to process signatures. And while last year we made it available, we only had one person that used it, and it's a completely volunteer program. No one has to do it with 900 signatures. You can collect those very easily with a signature petition. And the forums have not been set, and orientation for new council members have not been scheduled at this time. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I will say that candidates are sworn in on the first meeting of December. Does anyone have any questions?
I do not see anybody.
Clerk's office is looking forward to meeting all the potential candidates for our election. We're excited to serve the city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next item is Item C, and this is a presentation by the Central Arizona Project Board President on the Central Arizona Project and the Colorado River allocation and shortage, Mr. Chris Alice.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of council. I would like to introduce the President of the Central Arizona Water Conservation District, Board of Directors, President Terry Goddard. He's serving in his second full term on the Central Arizona Water Conservation District. Previously, President Goddard served as the mayor of Phoenix from 1984 to 1990, and the Arizona Attorney General from 2003 to 2011. With that, President Terry Goddard.
Thank you very much, mayor, members of the council. I'm here with Supervisor Steve Miller, who is also on our board, and so he will be sort of my co-presenter, even though he's lurking in the back of the room. And with respect to your agenda, mayor, we'd be happy to defer for the urgent golf cart issue that has been brought before you, if that would fit within your schedule. I believe water and CAP in particular is of general interest, and I'd be happy to spoke to the golf cart people as well as to the council, but I would defer to you if you would like to accelerate that item on the agenda. Okay, we're good?
We're good.
Okay, well, let me...
He knows. He was the mayor before and the Attorney General.
I planted a tree this morning in a park in Phoenix, so I have the greatest respect for what you do as town council members.
But good sir, I did give our police chief direction to work with their association and then report back to council, so...
So you're waiting for, okay, excellent. Well, I learned my lesson early in my term as mayor. I tried to raise the golf fees 50 cents, and 22 alternative plans later, we finally got agreement on what they should be. So be careful. This is a very important group that's behind me.
They vote a lot.
Somehow, mayor, I have no doubt that that is true. Could I ask first, council members, what particular questions? I'm prepared to do a sort of a general session about the CAP and the perils that we're in right now in terms of water supply in Penalt County and in Arizona. But if there are particular items you'd like me to emphasize, I'd be happy to do it. Any questions that are of particular burning importance, or would you like the full bore general presentation?
We would like the presentation because it is valuable for ourselves as well as our citizens, and I would also like to give kudos to our Public Works Director, Chris Alice, because he does keep us apprised of the situation, and anytime we have questions, he is always there to help clarify anything.
Well, not to get too far out of my lane, you have an extraordinary Public Works Director, in my humble opinion. Okay, we're gonna talk about, and I'll give you some of the, if I can figure out how this thing works. How about this one? Ah! When in doubt, use the mouse. Here's what I'm gonna try to cover. We're in a time of, I guess I gotta say, acute anxiety in all of Arizona about water and the Colorado River in particular. We live in a desert. We know that water is critically important. But recently, we've been living on borrowed time. And for the last, as I will talk about, what the CAP does, what's happening on the Colorado River, and why we have a shortage, even with the great year that we've just come through, we still have a serious shortage. So here's the CAP. That's what I'm here representing. It's a little canal of 336 miles. It starts in Parker, in the Colorado River, and it ends up just south of Tucson. And it's an extraordinary engineering accomplishment, because it moves 1.5, or used to move 1.5 million acre feet of water into central Arizona. But it does it by going uphill. It goes in the opposite direction of most rivers. But it serves otherwise the function of a really dynamic river that brings to all of central Arizona the water they need to grow and to thrive. So we're very proud of what we do. We think we're a pretty good facility, a plumber, if you will, that can bring about one-third of the water supply that is used in central Arizona, the rest being from either Salt River Project in the Maricopa County area or from groundwater. Now, our service area is three counties. It's not the whole state, but it is 80% of the state in terms of both population and economy. And it's Maricopa, Penalt, and Pima. And so it's a very important part of what makes Arizona, Arizona. We're governed by a 15-member board, also, like you, publicly elected from the three counties. Our, I would say, most important member is from Penalt County, because there's only one of him, and he is the gold standard. We have weighted voting. And so Penalt County will always have one vote, and everybody else has to go up or down based upon their respective... So Steve Miller is our gold standard in how we allocate our resource and our votes. Here's the basin. There's the map. Basically, seven western states draw their water from the Colorado River, and that water comes from the Rocky Mountains. So when you have a big storm here in Florence or in the Gila River watershed, it really doesn't affect what we consider most important, which is whether there's a good snowpack in Colorado. So we watch those weather reports very, very carefully. Now, many years ago, over 100 years ago now, in 1922, the seven states got together in Santa Fe, New Mexico, and they decided to try to draw up, divide up the river. And they did a pretty good job, although now, for reasons I'll get into, we're still sort of arguing about what they meant. But you can see the numbers up there. They basically divided what we call the lower basin, California, Nevada, and Arizona, and allocated 2.8 million acre feet to Arizona, 4.4 to California. And Nevada was hardly important in those days, so they got 300,000 acre feet. I would say they're still not that important, but certainly a lot of people have come to live there. The bottom line here, however, was that at this time, in 1922, California was already using 5 million acre feet, and they expanded almost six. And where did that come from? It came from the fact that Arizona wasn't able to use their 2.8, because a million was used on the river, and the rest of that allocation had no place to go until we got the Central Arizona Project. And that is an important part of our story. Right now, and I'm sort of jumping ahead here, we're in a shortage, and the states got together about five years ago, six years ago, and decided how to allocate that shortage. And this very complicated map basically talks about the various stages of the shortage, and it depends on how high Lake Mead is at the time. And if Lake Mead gets to a certain level, and it's hit it just two years ago, we go to a tier-one shortage, and that takes 512,000 acre feet out of our allocation of 1.5 million. of our allocation of one point five million. As you can see, one-third of our total amount of water coming from the Colorado River is at risk and, in fact, has been taken when we went to a tier-one two years ago. And then if you go to a tier-two, that's the green one, five hundred and ninety-two thousand acre feet, and that has also happened. This year, we're in a tier-two. But as I mentioned, hey, it snowed really well and rained really well last year, or earlier this year, and so we're about to go back to a tier-one. We're not out of the woods, but things are looking a little better on the river, and we've got a little bit more water to work with. Now, that five hundred thousand, as I know you are already well aware, much of it came out of Pinal County farms, because agriculture was the lowest priority in our system. And when we had to cut one-third, it came out of the farm allocation. It did not come out of the municipal allocation, and Florence has two thousand acre feet of CAP water that it has as a municipal allocation, and that's secure based upon this situation, if there was any anxiety about it. Next one, okay. Well, this just shows how we divide the shortage on a tier-two A. That's where we are right now. And I think... Okay, now, let me talk about the basin for a minute. These are all the states, and this is what we call the bucket chart. At the CAP Board, we get this every month, and it basically shows the conditions in the entire basin, starting way up in Wyoming and coming down the Colorado River to Mexico. And over on the right, you see the absolute numbers of where these lakes stand right now. Lake Mead at eight point eight-five, and this is as of the end of last month, Lake Powell at eight point seven-three. And the important part is, look just above it in the bold type. It says, "Last year, the system," that means all the lakes, "had nineteen million acre feet. This year, two point, twenty-five point eleven." That's a lot better. Now, we're not out of the woods, we've not cleared the decks and declared victory, but it does mean that the emergency that we were dealing with last year, which meant that the hydropower coming out of the two dams would actually be stopped, because there wasn't enough water to provide the head to run the generators. That crisis, for now, has passed. But there's something going on in this basin that I think we need to focus on, because it's gonna be important to us for a long time. It's a word that I thought somebody made up, and maybe they did. It's called aridification. And aridification basically means that because the climate is warming, because the temperatures in the Rocky Mountains are up about two and a year, degree and a half, the ground is drier, and so when the rain falls or the snow falls, it gets absorbed in the ground first before it runs off and ends up in our river. And that means that the same level of snowpack, the same level of rainfall that we were getting and producing a normal year, now produces between a half and a third of what it used to coming into Lake Powell in the upper basin. And that's really serious, because we could have exactly the same amount of snow and rain, and yet, one-third to one-half of the amount of water coming in to the lakes. And for approximately twenty-three years, we've had this problem accelerating. The drought that we're in right now started in the year 2000. That year, these bucket charts would all have been full, up to the very top, fifty million acre feet in the combination of the two largest reservoirs in the United States, Lake Mead and Lake Powell. And in the time since, they've been drawn down to the level you see here, and actually last year, it was significantly worse. For the first, say, seven years of this drought, we didn't really think it was a problem. We thought it was just an episode we were going through, and we would tough it out. And so nothing was done to change. Then in 2007, they realized we were in a serious problem, and the states started agreeing to reach the point that I just showed in the earlier slide, which is how we would divide the shortage if the shortage came. Now, there's a little secondary point there. When Arizona got funding for the Central Arizona Project, and that allowed us to use the rest of our allocation from the river, there was a little hiccup, there was a caveat. California had forty-two members of Congress, as I recall, in those years. Arizona had three. And in order to get a three billion dollar project through that was taking the water that they in California were still using, we had to get the support of the California delegation. And the only way that was gonna happen was for Arizona to agree that California would get its full four point four, which it was allocated back in the Colorado Compact. Even if it meant that Arizona, Central Arizona, the CAP went dry, they wouldn't lose a drop of their four point four. That's what's called the lowest priority on the river. It was a calculated decision, and it served us very well for just over thirty years. Frankly, we had a surplus in every one of the thirty years until 2022, and we got a lot of water, and some of it you in Florence have been putting underground. You've been saving it for a non-rainy day in the future, and that's very wise. And so is Phoenix, and so is Mesa, and so is Chandler. I mean, Central Arizona has taken a very long view about their water resources. But the wonderful source, the water from the Colorado, is now significantly imperiled. So we've got good reserves, and my bottom line is, we need to be very careful in the future about how we handle our water resources. Now, I'm gonna skip that one, because it really doesn't matter. The priorities, this gives you an idea of where we were. See that nice fat ag pool right there, the green line? And here's where we are today. And it means the tribal and the municipal waters, that's the highest priority, those two, are still being fully served. The ag pool is gone, this wonderful thing that was called excess, that's gone, and we're now down to the point where we're at the high priorities. It's about a million acre feet of water, still a lot of water, but that's where what we're living on today in Arizona. This'll give you an idea of what we've been doing as a state to try to avoid the Day of Judgment, to try to avoid the shortage. And it's an impressive story, and I hope you take some pride in this. Way back in 2014, we started seeing that there was a problem, there was a drought. By the way, the last time we had twenty-plus years of successive bad rain in this basin was in the year 1200. So it's been a very long time that this kind of dryness has affected this part of the world. But these are numbers that equate to water Arizona didn't take and left in Lake Mead to try to avoid, to try to avoid the basin crisis. And the total is three million, seven hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and one acre feet. Acre feet, as you know, is about three hundred thousand gallons. It's about enough to serve a family, of three families, for a year. And then you see this purple. This is what happened when the shortage has hit. And so in the first year of the shortage, 2021, at tier-one, we had to cut five hundred and twelve thousand acre feet. We did. That's actually this point. This is the tier-zero, I'm sorry, this is the tier-one. This is the tier-two A, which is where we are right now. And then hopefully, next year, we go down to about there on the map. But the total this year, the state of Arizona has saved between mandatory cuts and these discretionary cuts that were done voluntarily, almost a million acre feet in Lake Mead. It's a tremendous story, it's one that I think we ought to be very proud of and tell everybody about. So what's next? What do we do next? Good question, glad you asked it. We're in an interim period, and it's a critical period. Right now, we're about to do a new set of guidelines, and the last guidelines look easy compared to what we have to do now, because they always had a surplus. Now we've got a shortage, and so the seven basin states have to sit down and figure who's gonna take the cuts and how much they're gonna be. And of course, their first option, if they're not Arizona, is Arizona should take the cuts. We respectfully disagree, and we're gonna have to go to the mat in the next two years as we come up with this agreement among the seven states as to how that water's gonna be allocated, so that it doesn't run the CAP dry, it doesn't take away what is now our water heritage. And I think that's gonna be a very important part. The CAP is in the middle of it, but we don't represent the state of Arizona, the Department of Water Resources do, and we're working jointly with them to try to make the strongest position we possibly can. Interesting point, and I think you can judge for yourselves whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, the seven basin states are all represented by professionals, by engineers, water engineers, people that really know this science. There's not a single elected official on any of the decision-making boards that will determine our future, except somebody called the President of the United States, because the Department of Interior does have a very important role. But of the seven states, these are the water professionals that are trying to reach an accommodation as to how we're gonna handle a river that is much smaller than it was historically. Back in 1922, they thought confidently that there'd be twenty million acre feet in the Colorado every year, and in fact, the allocations they made added up to seventeen million, and they thought, well, there's three million there just for the good of the order. Today, we think it's between ten and eleven million acre feet a year, and it has to serve Mexico as well as the seven basin states. So there is a big change in how we do our allocations, and it's gonna be very important for Arizona that we be in there fighting for every drop that we can to keep it coming in through the Central Arizona Project. I think I've got one more slide. Working together, that would be nice, but we're friendly enemies at the moment. I mean, we talk the same language, but we have a very difficult job in trying to figure out how to make this resource, which is so important to forty million people in the western United States, actually serve us all and serve us right. So I've got a recommendation here, if you wanna know more. Central Arizona Project has a website that covers a lot of these details, the Arizona Department of Water Resources does, and so does the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. So those are places to go for further details if you'd like. We also are about at CAP to put together something I think is very timely, and that is, right on the Central Arizona Project Canal, we're gonna have an education center, which we hope will be able to bring community groups together to study this problem. It will bridge the canal, so they're gonna see the water that they're talking about right there under their feet and understand how important it is to keep it flowing under their feet. So Members of the Council, Mayor, I'm delighted to be here, I'd be happy to answer questions, but hopefully that gives you some ideas to what we're up against, and probably should ask Supervisor Miller if he has anything that I've left out that you'd like to add.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Mayor and Council. I have nothing to add. I'm glad that he did the presentation. He's way more versed on this and has been at it a lot longer than I have, and there's a lot to absorb sitting on this board, but I'm proud to represent Pinal County. And I certainly would ask that if you do have questions in the future or you need more information, reach out to me. I don't, probably won't have the answers, but I'll certainly get them and get them back to you and your constituents anytime I can. But Terry, wonderful job, thank you.
Mayor, can we take a three-minute break so we can get a photo op between the Council, Mr. Goddard and Mr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am. Does that mean you wanna drink water, sir?
Well, we have water to drink, but none to waste, I think is the bottom line, there's a slogan out there about it, but we all gotta be very careful. And I think that's, if I've got one lesson to sort of, to try to drive home, is that municipalities and individuals play a role in solving this problem, but we also have to fight for the total amount that Arizona's gonna get in the canal, because that's the big picture. Thank you again.
All right, we are reconvening for item number seven, new business. Item A is discussion, approval, disapproval of the warrant register of demands. This is ending October 31st, 2023. The amount is three million, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and ten cents. Are there any questions from any council members? Seeing none, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the warrant register of demands ending October 31st, 2023, in the amount of three million, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and ten cents.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Motion carries. Item B is discussion approval, disapproval to appoint David Pounders and Taz Meyer Catry to the Board of Appeals with a term to expire on December 31st, 2027. Is David and Taz Murray with us this evening?
He just raised his hand, Mr. David did.
Thank you so much. Good evening, sir, how are you today?
I'm feeling all right. I was really disappointed that I wasn't able to join you in person, but after spending the afternoon in urgent care, they told me I had strep throat, so I figured I better just join remotely today.
Well, thank you for not sharing that.
No problem.
Well, I wanna say thank you for applying, and I know that you own the firm Alta, the engineering firm right here on Main Street. Is there anything else that you would like to add?
Well, we've been really excited to be a part of this community. We've really enjoyed our time so far up there in the Silver King Hotel, and we look forward to many more years of serving the Florence area, and I couldn't think of a better way than to give back to the community with some community service and to help some engineering and planning work move along within the city. So I'm really excited for this position, and I hope to be of value.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. Council members, do you have any questions?
Mayor, may I?
Yes, you may.
So I wanted to point out that with the appointment of these two members, we will have a full Board of Appeals. I also wanna point out that the applicant, L-O-O-M-A-N-S, Lumens, she does come in with historic preservation community experience from Phoenix, Historic Site Review Committee, and we're very excited about both members who have the potential of being on this committee. Also, that this puts our businesses and other people who are dealing with us from a building inspection perspective, that if they do not agree with something the Town of Florence is doing, they're able to go through an appeals process, and they're able to go through the Board of Appeals, as which is stated in our I codes. And so we're very excited to have that in place, and we wanna make sure that we are telling the public that that's how any type of situation moving forward should be handled, is we should be making sure that we have a correct interpretation from those who are interpreting the codes, and we wanna make sure that we have qualified applicants on our Board of Appeals. And as you can see, we have two very qualified people, and we're very excited to add them to our Board of Appeal list.
Both have very impressive resumes and service, and it's great that they want to serve the community. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion to appoint David Pounders and Taz Meyer Catry to the Board of Appeals with a term to expire December 31st, 2027.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? And motion carries. Thank you. Item C is discussion approval, disapproval to enter into a service agreement with Steiger Services LLC to complete the POC 44 Heritage Bench Project in an amount not to exceed ninety-nine thousand, fifty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Mayor, Members of Council, tonight we're here to ask for your approval for the ball fields one, two, and portions of three fencing construction. The fencing is old, dilapidated, and in some ways could prevent future injuries with securing it. So we did an RFP process and completed that with availability for all vendors to participate and took the lowest bidder, which was Steiger LLC. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Council, are there any questions regarding this project? This is one that we have been planning for, for a while, so with that, we'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And motion carries. Item D is a discussion approval, disapproval of entering into a revocable license lease agreement between the Town of Florence and the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce to manage the McFarland State Historic Park through December 31st, 2025. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
We did a meet, discuss, and work through a contract negotiation with the Chamber of Commerce. Nothing has changed from the previous cycle. The term of the agreement will be December 31st, 2025. That is the same exact term as the state of That is the same exact term as the State of Arizona agreement. So approximately eight months prior to, we'll begin negotiations with the State of Arizona so that within six months, we can begin negotiations with the Chamber of Commerce since they both come up at the same time. And so with that, we're very excited that the Chamber of Commerce Director, Roger Beattie, is in the room if he has anything to comment. And we're very excited to move forward with our relationship and our continued successful programs.
Mr. Beattie, would you like to say anything at this time?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, and this person on the phone. Just want to say it's been a great partnership. Things have really moved forward. If you've been by the McFarland State Park lately, they're putting in new fencing. We're fixing up quite a bit. The state parks, due to the town's help, has really stepped up a lot, and I look forward to continuing this, this relationship. So if I need, there are any questions, I can answer those too while I'm here.
I don't have any questions, but we're really happy with the way that everything has been moving and the activities and events, as well as the partnerships that you've been building with the businesses.
Well, I appreciate you saying so. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
You as well. With that, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? And motion, motion carries. Item number eight is our call to the public. This is our second call to the public this evening. Anybody in person or online? This is an opportunity to speak. Is there anybody that would like to speak at this time? Good evening, sir. How are you?
Oh, thank you. My name is, this echoes so much, it's hard to make out. This PA system's hard to, for, for people to hear. I'm going to back off a little bit. But my name is Joe Dano. I'm a resident of Florence Gardens. I've been there for twenty years. And I'm, I'm speaking in behalf of the people that depend on these golf carts, and I'm one of them. And I'm speaking of disabled people like myself. I became legally blind ten years ago, and I depended, I, I can still drive a golf cart. I cannot drive a car. I cannot get a license anymore. So I'm, I'm making an appeal to the people that make decisions about this to consider the disabled people like myself, and there's many of us at Florence Gardens that cannot get a license anymore. And we really depend on our golf carts to get around, to visit our neighbors, to go to events. We depend on them heavily. And if, even if I got my golf cart legal to drive without a license, I'm, I'm going to break the law if I drive it. So what I'm saying is, I hope this is all taken into consideration. Have mercy on some of us that depend heavily on, on these golf carts because we've got no other way of getting around in Florence Gardens. And there's many of us like myself. And that's, I just appeal to you to consider that when you make your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the second call to the public. And I do want to say thank you. Thank you for speaking. Thank you for attending. This is our call to the council, and it is for current events only. Councilmember Maldonado?
I'd just like to wish everybody a Happy Thanksgiving and just like everybody to be safe out there and hope to see everybody out at the, I won't be here for the parada, but I'll be out there for the Christmas parade. So hopefully I get to see some folks out there. Thank you.
Councilmember Larson?
I was going to say about the, the parade as well, but obviously that is coming up, and we're all very excited for the rodeo and parade. I also wanted to request that we follow up with Ms. Bedford's comments earlier regarding the parks. I know we had talked about having that meeting in the future as well, but just making sure that we're addressing those concerns. And then also, I know she was asking about the dispensaries, and it's an open commerce. So whatever businesses come here, decide to come here, that is something, as long as they're within zoning, it doesn't come before us. So I just wanted to speak to that. There's only so much that we can control when it comes to being on town council. So just wanted to articulate how that sort of works. I know some people obviously have, we all have desires of things we want to come to Florence and that we want to see in Florence, and we can do our best to advocate for those things, but it's an open commerce. So yeah, otherwise, we're very excited for the things that are coming, and I appreciate all the people showing up today. When I was speaking with the individuals from the CAP, I had asked for them to articulate how the information they just provided us then relates to new development because that is something that's a big concern for us. So they were saying that we possibly would have a future meeting about that. So I look forward to that conversation, how that works on the state level, and then how it works to us in Florence and new development. Because I know that's a lot of the conversation that we hear, especially online, whenever a new developer comes in. So I just look forward to that conversation and having that out for the public as well. So that's all I have for today.
Just that, you know, we have the parades coming up, and junior parada, and Thanksgiving. Just want to say God bless everybody's holidays. Be safe. Go Gophers.
Vice Mayor Mendoza? Oh, Councilmember Buchalato. I'm a visual person, so I apologize.
That's okay. I just had a couple things, kind of echoing what Kristin said about the dispensaries. I know I had kind of mentioned a while back that if we could just put something out on social media or on our website, just explaining that that doesn't come before council because a lot of people seem to be confused on that, and I can understand why because liquor, liquor licenses come before, so they're assuming that this probably does too. So if we could just try to clarify some of that. And I wanted to say kudos to the residents of Florence Gardens for coming, asking questions in a respectful manner, and coming with a couple solutions. Regardless of what happens, it's nice to be able to have that open discussion, and them being proactive like that is very much appreciated. I also wanted to speak about supporting small businesses every day, not just this Saturday. You know, a family, families depend on that, and keeping this town alive, you know, depends on supporting the businesses within. Besides that, everybody make sure you get out to the rodeo grounds. It's three days this year, not just two, so Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And go support the oldest junior rodeo in the nation. And to all the residents, staff, and council, I wish you all a very, very, very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Well, I want to echo, thank you for everyone that showed up today. It's really wonderful to see all the citizens here taking an active role in their, in their town. I do want to mention that I too wish everyone a Happy Thanksgiving and remember that the next, what is that? For five days, we're going to have kids off of school, and they're going to be running around in the neighborhood, so be cautious of them, be careful, and drive defensively. That's all for me.
Well, thank you. So I hope to see everybody out at the Junior Parada. Again, that parade starts on Saturday. It'll be very exciting. And the event, as everybody mentioned, three days long out in the rodeo grounds. And our parade on Main Street for Christmas is the first Friday in December. Mark your calendars. We hope to see you there. We will be lighting up Main Street that evening at approximately 6:00 PM, and there'll be a lot of different activities happening. Come on out. As other men, others have mentioned, the shops will be open. Come shopping, come and enjoy. We do have an executive session this evening. So with that, we, oh, no, I apologize. Before we get to that, we need to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to the Merrill Ranch Community, Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Roll call.
Mayor, I've conducted a silent roll call.
Thank you. And we do have a discussion and possible action to approve the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, July 17th, 2023, special meeting minutes. Ms. Garcia?
Each time we have a CFD meeting, we bring back our minutes. So this is our latest set of minutes that does need to be approved. So if anyone has any questions, I'm here to help.
All right. Are there any questions regarding the minutes? With that, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And motion carries. We need a motion to adjourn to a joint executive session between the Town of Florence Town Council and the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to a joint executive session between the Florence Town Council and the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we're going to go into executive session. For those of you that are in the audience, we will be going into executive session. We will come out and adjourn from that executive session, and then at that time, we'll adjourn from the Community Facilities District Number One. And then we're going to continue into another executive session for the Town Council Executive Session. So at this point, I just wanted to make you aware so you were not sitting and waiting for hours because that is what it is going to be. Thank you.